I want to welcome you. I want to welcome you all to the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. A couple of quick introductions. When introduced, Commissioner James Ernst, who's serving as Vice Chair. Gunnar Hand, the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning, and Janet Parker, the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. We have the following Commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Mark Mohler, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner Karen Jones, Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner Susanna Polly, Commissioner Evelyn Hill, and we also have Patrick Waters, our Legal Counsel. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn things over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating by telephone or Zoom to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members use the Raise Your Hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a break, use the Raise Your Hand feature. For those attending the meeting this evening, please use the Raise Your Hand feature if you want to speak on an application. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco kck.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the Board. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the Board if a question is directed to them by the Chairman. The staff will make their recommendations, and the Board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application tonight is BOZA 2021-025. Andrea Wischoff with Atlas Surveyors for property at 13310 Leavenworth Road. Does any member of the Board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wischoff, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please go ahead and give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
My name is Andrea Wischoff. I'm at 2300 Hutton Road, Kansas City, Kansas. We're doing a plot on this property, and currently we do not meet the minimum required frontage. On that street there, I believe the minimum required frontage is 300 feet, and we're at about 212 on one of the lots. This is actually two variances and one here. The other part is the minimum required acreage. Sorry, I missed that word of acreage. We need to be at five acres, and right now we only have one acre on the house that is currently there.
Okay, so you're requesting two variances, one for the house being on one acre. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and the other for the minimum frontage.
Minimum frontage, and there'll be two parcels back there when you're done?
There will be more than two parcels, and I apologize that I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it is going to be three, possibly four lots in this subdivision that we're trying to do. But the variance has only covered, I believe, just one of the lots there, Lot Four.
Okay, any kind of restrictions or anything like that on the type of homes that can be built there or?
No, no restrictions, and the reason for the smaller lot there, smaller than what is regulation for that area, is because currently there's a house there that isn't worth a whole lot, and if you put five acres on the house, now the land is worth more than the house itself, and it's just really a hard sell at that point. I believe that at that point, there has to be cash involved. There's not going to be a loan available, and those kinds of things, and that's kind of the reason why we need a smaller lot on that particular house.
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Again, seeing none, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comments. Director Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This case is being heard in conjunction with changes on 2021-028 and plat 2021-017 at the City Planning Commission hearing later this evening. That change of zone is to take one relatively large parcel currently zoned ag YCO and split it into four parcels. Three will remain as agricultural, dropping the YCO suffix with the rezoning, and then the fourth lot, the smaller lot you see in the bottom right corner here, is being proposed to change its own to R1. Lots one and two are deeper, three times deeper than they are wide, one by about a 17%, the other by about an 18% increase. The size of these parcels, i.e. the width and their depth, that actually makes it a pretty small, almost negligible difference. When the, if and when the change of zone goes forward later this evening to the R1 designation for Lot Four, that has a requirement of, and it's not a common one, but when you're changing something to R1 and it happens to be on a major arterial like Leavenworth Road, it has to have at least five acres, and so it does meet the, I believe the applicant misspoke, it does meet the frontage requirement for that parcel. It does not meet the size requirement, so it's less than what is required by code. What I would say is, if you look at this neighborhood, this part of town, this is in the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan. There are all sorts of large farms broken down into smaller segments, subdivided into small R1 parcels for existing homes and larger tracts for other farms, future potential development and whatnot. So this is not an uncommon parcel pattern. We have received no opposition, no letters of support, and there are no active notice of violations on the property. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner, sorry. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Okay.
Second.
I've got a motion made by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Connolly. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
Y'all missed me or something? You coming back to me?
No, it's our new voting system. I just called you right now.
Oh, okay. I've been out. Okay, aye.
And Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We will see you again at the Planning Commission meeting.
Chairman, I think that Mr. Ernst is now with us, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next application is BOZA 2021-026. Michael Bonaboom with Hudson Apartments LLC for property at 3600 Rainbow Boulevard. At this time, does any member of the Board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Baranbaum, we got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Good evening. Michael Baranbaum, Lameford Property Group, I'm the managing partner here. This is 4705 Central Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Looking forward, thank you for having us here tonight. Looking forward to sharing a little bit more about this project and Planning Commission regards to the zoning appeal. Of us now, I'd like to hand the mic over to Nicole Curry. Are you able to? If she raises her hand, can she speak? And then we're also wondering, can she?
Yes.
Okay, can she share her screen to share some of the slides we've prepared?
Yes, we'll promote her over. Just, there we go, Ms. Curry, I've got you queued up to speak, and then Janet, you'll move her over.
Yeah, just as soon as I can.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. If the applicant is going to present on the change of zone that's being heard later tonight, we should save that for later.
I'm sorry, can you say again, Gunnar, please?
I was just saying, if the applicant was intending to present the project in regards to the change of zone, that's being heard later tonight. This is only for the BOZA.
Correct. Okay, I need one of you to mute. If you're in the same room.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I cannot find her on the list. Are they on the same?
I've got her right here in front of me, Nicole Curry.
Did you, okay.
There she is. Yep, and I've got her, I think I've got her promoted to panelist.
Thank you, and I just, you have permission to show your screen now.
Make sure they.
Can you mute me?
Yes, mute one of you. There we go. There we go, Mike. Thank you. There we go.
All right. Thank you. Let me share my screen real quick here, and I am going to. All right, thank you all. As Michael was saying, this is for the BCA portion. We'll be presenting the rest of this after this meeting, in the later part of this meeting. But the one item that we do want to go over is our percentage of open space. Our site, as we were discussing, is at Rainbow and 36th Lot, which is currently the home of the Cambridge West Apartments. To get our performance work and everything to work on this site, it is a very tight site, especially with the hillside that we have there, and we want to make sure that all parking is concealed within the site. With that being the case, we are, when you calculate the open space of just the site itself, we are at 32%. However, sitting above what is the parking garage, we do have a courtyard area designed coming at a later, for prior to file development plan, that is an open space for the residents of this site. When you add that area, which is 15,000 square feet, to the overall site, we are 44% open space for, and this space being especially for the residential use. We know the other part of this is making sure that we have adequate drainage on the site and civil is handling that.
Okay. Anything else?
That is all.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Can everybody see my screen again?
Yes.
Okay, this case is being heard in conjunction with changes on 2021-033 at the City Planning Commission hearing later this evening. This project is in the Rosedale Area Master Plan, right off Rainbow, as the applicant had mentioned. That change of zone is to go from RP5 Apartment District to RP5 High-Rise Apartment District. It's a matter of density more than it is a matter of height, if you will. This case, again, is for less than required open space. The way that the code is currently written, it's basically, the intent is that it's open space, i.e. unbilled portions of the parcel. That is an out-of-date definition of open space. Many jurisdictions include things like rooftop pools and balconies in their open space calculations for more urban areas such as this. Our code was written for it to be undeveloped space in general. One of the conditions of, and this is the site plan you just saw from the applicant, this, the landscape plan sort of rotated on its axis. And what you notice here is in the way, way back, there's a sort of absence in the parcel. That is essentially a huge cliff and drop-off to the ground floor on Rainbow Avenue. So behind this is a wooded area and a cliff that buffers between this and the residential neighborhood to the west. Just a few more pictures on it. Again, you'll see more of this later this evening. This is the existing Cambridge. So one of the conditions of approval that staff worked with the applicant on, specific to the BOZA that carries over between the BOZA and the City Planning Commission case, is related to the preserving of that cliff. We've asked the applicant as a condition of approval for this, this variance and, again, and the change of zone to develop, to write a D restriction to keep that cliff and the the existing tree stand on top of it has open space in perpetuity on the parcel, and they've agreed to do that. Staff has received no letters of opposition nor support. There are no notice of violations on this property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Polly, is that a second from you?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Polly. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and we will see the both of you at the City Planning Commission meeting here just shortly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next appeal is number BOZA 2021-029. Doug Strand for property at 2211 North 13th Street. Does any member of the Board have any contact disclosed with regard to this application?
No.
You?
Mr. Strand, are you in the audience? There we go. Mr. Shanks, are you representing Mr. Strand?
Yes, I'm here, and I think Doug is here as well, but I figured I'd raise my hand first.
There we go, I found him. Sorry, I was looking for a hand up, and I did not see one, but I did find him and have moved him over, so I've got you both. So whoever would like to present, go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
I'll go ahead and present, Doug. My name is Lonnie Shanks with JCA Architects. That's Joel Creek Architecture. And this is a property, like you said, at 2211 North 13th Street. It's currently zoned commercial. We would like to rezone it to R2. Doug has purchased the property and would like to convert it into his prime residence. It's a, it's a very unique building. It's been probably built in the 60s. It's got a unique form and some folded plates for canopies, which we're asking for some variances on. And I think it's a great reuse of the property. I think we're lucky to have someone like Doug come in and turn it into a nice residence.
All right, anything else you want to add? Mr. Strand, anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, and this was formerly a funeral home, is that correct?
I believe it was formal, formerly a chiropractic clinic. It may have been at one time a funeral home.
Okay, and how long has it been since it's been occupied in any capacity?
I really have no idea. When we purchased the property, it had been vacant for, I'm assuming, years.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? They say no. We'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. So what we have in front of us for this case are three different variances. This is also in, being heard in conjunction with changes on 2021-036 later this evening at the City Planning Commission. That is to go from commercial, CPO, commercial, non-retail office to R2, adjacent to the property on all sides, I believe, except the south. It is all zoned R2. So the applicant had requested just to go to R2 or RP2 is what we'll do with that change of zone, or proposing to do with that change of zone. Again, the applicant is looking to take a former office building essentially and convert it into a residence. That comes with quite a few changes, as it's clearly in some of these pictures. This is in the Northeast Area Master Plan, right off 13th at the corner of 13th and Waverly. I don't know if you're familiar with this project, but it's kind of an old 60s, whatever it was, office. It's got these very unique canopies across the building over the main entrances for automobiles and the drive-through. Kind of don't see canopies like that anymore. The building is old enough to potentially be of historic or architectural significance, but it has never been surveyed and it's never been identified as a potential candidate for any type of local, state, or federal designation. We did just want to, in the staff report, staff thought it was important to acknowledge the fact that it is certainly old enough to be, in the sense that, you know, it's kind of a cool building that we didn't want to lose, and I think that was in line with what the applicant has proposed with his reuse. We, there were some sort of back and forth of the applicant a little bit on this case. I think that's important to note here. Because of the financing, it's, the applicant requested that this be a residentially zoned property. You can have a residence in a C1, two, or three-zoned district. So we had tried to go through the C1 route, and the applicant wanted to keep it at the R2 route, and we can talk about that a little bit more at the change of zone. But it's germane here because all these variances apply to essentially, are applying to a building that was built to commercial standards to meet this R2 district. If it was a change of zone to a C1, it would have been potentially no or a different slate of variances to do this sort of rehab use. With all that said, staff did add some conditions of approval related to potentially switching it back to a commercially zoned property, which wouldn't change the ownership. And if a mortgage was procured, it wouldn't necessarily impact that mortgage after the fact. So there's some triggers in there that we'll talk about a little bit more at the change of zone, as it relates specifically to the three variances being requested. Here, staff has received no letters of support, no opposition. There are some older notice of violations on this property, but are irrelevant to this project. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
I think it's a great repurpose of this property that's been vacant for years, so motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Connolly, is that a second from you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mohler?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last item on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda is BOZA 2021-035. Fernando Gomez with Envision Construction for property at 150 North 74th Street. Does any member of the Board have any contact disclosed with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I've got you queued up to speak. Would you go ahead, please, give us your name and address and tell us about this project?
My name is Fernando Gomez. My address is 12438 Slater Street. I'm an architect for education, and I own the general contracting firm here, and I have education in urban housing management as well. And I'm representing the owner of this property. This property was initially brought to the Board of Zoning Adjustment in 2020. The name, the number assigned back then was a BCA 2374. We got denied. We were at that time looking for approval on a, we requested a variance on the height of the building. This is an existing home that was built somewhere around 25 years ago, and my client bought it in 2017. Since he bought it, he's been paying his taxes, the property taxes, and he wanted to legalize this, so. First, the city asked him when he went, he was working, and they, he's got a stop-work order. So they told him, you need to do some drawings, some plans. We need to see some plans. So he hires us initially to do this part. We did architectural drawings for him, and then the permit department asked him to, for more studies, like structural studies, since this building has been vacant for over 20 years. So we hire Norton Schmidt as a structural engineer firm. We did the studies, and then we got denied the building permit because the house had violations on the building height. That was number one, and also they weren't sure about the site setbacks. So we brought this project in 2020 with the number 2374. Initially, we presented the project to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and in our first meeting, it seems like some of the members of the Board were willing to consider. So they asked us to bring for the next meeting that was held in June, one month later, for a plot plan and also for tax receipts. They want to make sure this guy was paying his taxes and everything. So we mailed these receipts and the plot plan. We couldn't make it on time because the period of time was too short to get a survey or to get this done within the middle of the COVID pandemic a year ago. So what we did is that we got, we created our own site plan based on the geographical information system of the county, and we verified it on the field. We'd submit that, but for some reason, probably our email went to the junk folder or something. And then when we got to the meeting on June, the Board denied us because they never received our information. Anyway, we provided copies of all this documentation and the copies of our screen that we sent this, but since we were denied, my client decided to make us a bigger move to legalize this. So what we did is that we developed a new. So what we did is that we developed a new set of drawings where we remove the fourth floor. The city ordinance requires in this zoning area, a property not to exceed thirty-five feet in height or three stories. So we went, we measured on the field, this property, we removed the fourth floor that you can see a little portion in the upper left picture. I'm just making it only three stories, remove the fourth story, we will get thirty-two point five feet from the ground, which will be within the city regulations or ordinance. We presented these drawings, we did the, we hire again the structural firm to do the structural studies, got the plans. We brought it to the building department and they deny our license because they say, well, you guys are about eight or nine inches, something like that. Closer to a property line that we should do be. The city ordinance required you to be seven feet from the property line. We are six feet point twelve. I don't, well, this is point twelve is probably two or three inches, something like that. And the other corner of the house is six point twelve inches. So basically, that's what this variance is for. We have already drawings. We're proposing to remove the fourth story to meet the height requirement. And we brought this petition for the city just to allow us to be, you know, six point eighty-six in feet from the property line. A six point twelve. Basically, we are about eight to ten inches away where we should be, but we're not encouraging to next door property or nothing like that. We just closed it like where we should be. So basically, that's a, but this case is about this eight or nine inches.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant on this one? Saying no, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? I've got Maricela. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address, please. Maricela.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please give us your name and address.
Yes, so Maricela Zamora, four, four, nine, North Eighty-Sixth. And I was just wanting to present ourselves to present our proposal on our address and not this particular address. I believe we were ten minutes late to the meeting. We were informed that it was at six thirty and
He's on the planning commission.
Yeah, your meeting starts at seven, your, your, your case is on the seven o'clock meeting, sir, or six thirty meeting.
Six thirty meeting. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, anyone wants to speak on this case? Please raise your hand on this case. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Mr. Chair is just going to hand Director Plan and Urban Design as the applicant representative mentioned this. This property did have a board of zoning appeals case two, three, seven, four that was heard last June twenty twenty, at which time you denied a height variance. The height standard for an R one district is two and a half stories, thirty-five feet, just for point of clarity. Before you tonight is another request for a variance, this time for a side yard setback. Again, the applicant mentioned it. This is in sort of the Riverview area in the midtown part of Unified Government. There's some pictures of the property. I would note that staff had mentioned that the fence height is actually out of compliance as well. It has to be four feet in the front yard. But essentially, we're looking at this side yard, which is the southern edge of the property. And because of the orientation of the building and the lot, it sort of doesn't sit in parallel to the lot line. So there's a bit of a change in what that, what this would essentially amount to, even at six is inches pushed back. That is this side of the building or this side of the building right here, if you can see my cursor moving back since inches would basically be removing the whole, whole side of the house. The applicant had mentioned that this is a sort of an ongoing case. If you all recall, some of you were not on the board of zoning appeals at that time, but just to refresh everybody's memory. This had a, this property has a long history of violations of stop work orders of starts and stops and fits. And the applicant is at the tail end of all of those issues. This is technically a self-imposed hardship. They are coming back and asking for forgiveness, not asking for permission as such. And because of the protocols of this board of zoning appeals, while there is no letters of support, no opposition. And there are again quite a long history of notices violations on the property. Staff does recommend denial.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, Director Han, I guess the question is, I mean, he's saying this, does this, I guess, is it two stories, thirty-one feet or is it higher? I mean, he's bringing something else that's kind of seem like he's avoiding the last time that we denied it. Is, has anyone I went after to check as if those, if the height requirements is met?
This is going to hand Director Plan and Urban Design. As the applicant had mentioned, they've submitted the plans to deconstruct the top story of the building to get it down to within code, again, two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. At the time of that June meeting, we had said that it looks like you may not be meeting the side yard setbacks. It was a condition of that original case that they come back with these if they needed it because we had not received a plot plan. The applicant had mentioned there were some issues with the back and forth and junk folders and what have you. I don't a hundred percent recall that course of action over a year ago now, but essentially, they submitted their plans to building inspection to to demo the top story. At which time building inspection said, you can't, we can't approve that until you fix this other variance because they had finally come with a plot plan that showed that the building was within the side yard setback without a variance. So they are before you tonight to get the variance so they can complete the project and reduce the building to the right size, height, excuse me, not size, height, and then come back. But again, because this is a self-imposed hardship, I either ask them for forgiveness and because of the conversation we have had with the board of zoning appeals and staff, we are recommending denial because it's a self-imposed hardship.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
So Gunner, but refresh my memory, since the property has changed hands multiple times. The current owner, all of the self-imposed hardships are not theirs. Is that right? They've just inherited some, at least some of the hardship, self-imposed hardships?
No, he bought the hardship when he bought the property.
Well, that's what I'm saying. He bought it. And so there was full, it seems like I remember maybe asking even this question before. There, there was some sort of full disclosure. So he knew what he was buying, you know, lock, stock and barrel with the issues as they existed at the time.
It's going to hand Director Plan and Design. I mean, essentially, Commissioner, that is correct. It is not the U G's responsibility to make sure that people understand what they're buying. But it is the buyer's responsibility to assume all responsibility for that property, including all the violations, including all of these self-imposed hardships.
So let, so let me ask you this conceivably, though, I mean, because this has been before us, it seems like so many times. I mean, because it's, it's, I mean, would, would your recommendation ever be anything but denial? Because the self-imposed hardships are simply just not going to go away.
It's going to hand Director Plan and Urban Design. The policy is to recommend denial for all self-imposed hardships. What that means for this case is if denied, they would have to demo the whole building and start all over. There's no way, there's no way you can take off, push back six inches, a whole facade of a building and remove a story and expect to salvage much.
That's what I was thinking. There's really no good way, no optimum way, you know, for this to be rectified is almost what I'm thinking.
Yeah, the variance is small. You can look at the past variances we just approved, which technically were a lot bigger. The applicant is trying to do the right thing.
Okay, thank you.
They're moving in the right direction. Commissioner, Commissioner Muller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Hand, that was, I'm kind of tracking with Commissioner Jones. If, if, if we weren't arguing about this six or seven inches, would you be much more inclined to approve this?
It's going to hand Director Plan and Design. Again, it's the established policy that all self-imposed hardships, we recommend denial. I will stress that the applicant is trying to do the right thing here and trying to comply with a past decision of this board of zoning appeals. And six inches is not a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Polly, I saw your hand up. Did you get your question answered?
I did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ernst.
I have yet a different take on it, unfortunately. Everybody's trying to do the right thing. The part that frustrates me is that some period of time, someone perhaps including this owner has paid taxes to the city who dutifully took them and spent the money. How can we work both sides of the street, if you will? We're collecting your taxes, but now you're going to tear this down because you missed some rules down the road. But Gunner has no choice but to pursue this angle. That's, that's what the, the book says. But how do we justify the fact that the other hand of the city would take their money all day long until the building's torn down? And that's the frustrating part to me.
Gunner, comment or you understand? Well, moving on. Thank you, Commissioner Ernst, and I, I hear you. Commissioner Jones.
Well, that brings up one more question in my mind. So that if, if, if we don't, not that we feel pressured to do the wrong thing, but I'm just saying as an as an outcome of this, if we deny this conceivably, the current owner could just let this property languish, not demolish it, and then it sits vacant for maybe forever.
That's, it's going on twenty some odd years as it is, as a vacant property. And that's why this is called the zoning appeals.
Got you understood on that. But so Gunner, let me ask you this, this, as far as we know with this property that's been before so many times. Are there any other issues that, that we're aware of? I mean, has this been fully inspected to, to where we're sure? We're dealing with the last bit of issues.
Based on our zoning review of it, we think that other than what I had mentioned a little bit earlier, if the board of zoning appeals does want to move forward with the recommendation of approval, we do have a couple of conditions of approval we would put in form to be one of them being they have a six foot fence in their front yard. So that's the only zoning, but other zoning violation that we see.
And everything else would rest with the building inspections department to make sure that it was up to code that way, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Jones, that satisfy your question? Okay, other questions for the, other questions for the director? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Excuse me, Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations and comments with the addition of the reduction of the fence.
Okay, motion's been made for approval, subject to the staff stipulations and recommendations stated in the, in the director's comments. Commissioner, and that was made by Commissioner Jones. Mr. Connor, excuse me, Commissioner Connolly, is that a second from you?
It's a second.
All right, have a second from Commissioner Connolly. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones? Aye. Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
And Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions outlined by staff and the maker of the motion, passes aid in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda. We're going to take a five minute recess and then we will convene the City Planning Commission. Thank you all for your patience. We'll be back with you shortly. Start the recording.
Yes.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Carson. I will be serving as chair for the City Planning Commission tonight, so I want to welcome you all to the November eighth meeting. Also want to make a few introductions. Karen Jones is serving as our vice chairman this evening. Gunner Hand, the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning is with us along with Janet Parker, who is the executive assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. Also, we have Byron Toy, City Planning Staff, and Patrick Waters, the Unified Government Legal Counsel. You have the following commissioners present with us tonight on the Zoom, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner Susanna Polly, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Jake Miller, and Commissioner Evelyn Hill. With that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to COVID nineteen, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a break, use the raise your hand feature. For those in attendance, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone only, or if you're having trouble logging into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco kck.org as Secretary Parker is monitoring that email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens, which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, December second, twenty twenty-one. For final plans and final plan reviews for tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may by two thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them by the chairman. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be a a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final flats, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration and making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this evening's hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the October 11, 2021, City Planning Commission Minutes. Plat 2021-020, Caitlin Wolf with Bartlett and West. Final plat to combine lots at 6716 and 6720 Burger Avenue. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 8, 2021, the application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, since we only have one item on the consent agenda, is there anyone in, on the commission that wants to have it removed for special consideration? Seeing none, we'll go to the audiences. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to pull the one item off of the consent agenda for special consideration? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller, is that a second from you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? Not seeing any, so roll call, please, Janet.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the conditions of the staff and the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. If you were here tonight for the consent agenda, everything has now been approved, and you're welcome to stay for the meeting or leave if you like. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we will now move on to the non-consent agenda. Our first item is change of zone application number 3241. Dana Blay with DBL Architecture Incorporated. Change of zone from CP1 Planned Limited Business District to CP2 Planned General Business District to add a fuel island for a fueling station, convenience store rebuild at 4732 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 8, 2021, the application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyndham Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Blay, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Blay, thank you.
Okay, this is Dana Blay, DBL Architecture, 8031 Winaga Road, Leewood, Kansas. And to speak to this project, it's been in the process for quite a long time. And I appreciate the Plan Commission hearing this. What, one, one mistake on the staff report was that we were adding two pumps, and that we're actually removing one and adding two. So we're, we're actually adding one more pump to the total to have four pumps. And that's the reason why the zone change is required. This is, this is a, a nice project that we're redoing the entire service station. It currently has signs and pumps over the, the setback line, so we're remedying that. I believe that the canopy was actually over the canopy setback line that we have to design to during these days now. So, the variance that we're asking for is for parking. We maxed out the property based on setbacks and parking setbacks to get the, the numbers to the maximum amount that, that we can, but we're still short, so that, that's, that's the variance request. And there, there was also a comment in, in the report about violations of signage on, on the fence that they had there, and that was something the owner wasn't aware of, and he's definitely going to remedy that probably tomorrow if it still exists. So, the idea is to take the small convenience store, enlarge it, and have a separate retail space, and make, make it a nice, nice store. To the north of the property is a wooded area that is, has a huge cliff, almost like to it that has, has a topography that's undesirable to park on and, and not accessible. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, and we're trying to put as much landscape back, try to make it as nice as we can.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to staff, and we'll get Director Hand's comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Before you, it was a change of zone from CP1 to CP2, as the applicant mentioned. They currently have three pumps, fuel pumps, which is allowed in C1. That is the maximum in C1. Anything more than three, i.e. four, requires a change of zone to our, excuse me, C2 commercial or higher. You can sort of see it here right now. The current pump is here, here, and in the middle. We're going to get rid of this one and add two. So, a net of four requires C2, not C1, which is why we're here today. The applicant mentioned some parking variances. We have all the required parking for the new building accommodated on site using the four-to-one-thousand square feet ratio. They meet that requirement. The, one of the conditions of approval is a part of the clarification. If, for instance, this other retail space you see here happens to become a restaurant, that's a different parking requirement than what is required for just the standard commercial uses, the four-to-one-thousand. You immediately have to have at least ten for a restaurant. So, at that point, depending on what is in that building, number one, retail space, if it's just regular retail commercial, it should be fine. If it's a food service or anything else, it will require our variance to move forward. So, just a point of clarification, there is no Boza in front of you tonight for this case. We are just talking about this change of zone to move it forward. This is in the midtown area, just north of State Avenue. And ever so slightly west of 635, you can see some elevations here. We are requiring that they meet the commercial design guidelines with those in required different enhanced landscaping, pedestrian connectivity to the sidewalk network on State Avenue and elsewhere. They had mentioned the signage. There are currently two notice of, open notice of violations for that signage. Part of, one of the conditions of approval is to rectify that violation as well as meet the sign, the sign code accordingly. Additionally, when staff did their site visit, they noticed that some of the lighting were out of compliance, and that is another condition of approval. Again, these are all incorporated in the redesign, rebuild of the site. And we, we feel confident that we're going to be able to clean this all up accordingly. There have been no letters of support, no opposition. I mentioned the notices of violation a little earlier. You can kind of see them here in this picture right here. That's part, not all of them. There's a lot of this that happens at every convenience store. It's, it's hard to enforce, because there's a lot of them, and they're temporary, and they're technically you need a sign permit for this, and technically none of these signs are allowed in the sign code anyway, so you can't do this. But every convenience store does it. You see it all over the place. Again, no opposition, no support. Staff recommends approval.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the director? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion approved made by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Hill, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye. Aye. Did you hear me?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Mr. Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application 3241, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on December 2nd at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications that we are going to hear together, and we will vote on separately. Change of Zone Application COZ 2021-028. Andrea Wishaw with Atlas Surveyors. Change of Zone from AG Agriculture Wyco District to R1 Single Family District to create one single-family residential lot at 13310 Leavenworth Road. And Plat 2021-017. Final plat for one single-family lot at 13310 Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated November 8, 2021, the application of their documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyndham Echo for the change of zone application, the notices to property owners, and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting this evening. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wishop. I've got you queued up to speak. Please go ahead. Again, for the record, give us your name and address, please.
Andrea Wishop, 2300 Hutton Road, Kansas City, Kansas. So, what we're doing here is as just a four-lot subdivision, and we're needing to change the zoning on that one lot, I believe it is lot four, to, to meet the current standards.
Okay, is that it?
I'm sorry, I think my phone cut out there.
Okay.
Trying to, yeah, so we're, we're doing the subdivision, splitting it into four lots, and the change of zone. Basically, it's all zoned at Wyco right now, and so we'd be driving, we'd be dropping that Wyco suffix, and then the, the smaller lot there would be just a residential, not, not necessarily agricultural.
That would be changed to R1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant on this case? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This case is being heard in conjunction with Boza 2021-025, which was approved earlier this evening. In addition to Plat 2021-017, again, as the applicant mentioned, this is a subdivision of a large Ag Wyco zone property from one large lot to four lots. The two Boza, or excuse me, three variances heard, one for lots one and two and four were width-to-deep ratio for one and two, and size for lot four. Staff, in reviewing the case, had noted just two small conditions of approval. One, that any future access to the four developed sites off Leavenworth Road had to get a right-of-way permit from Public Works Department and meet UG standards for the driveway. Essentially, that means you got to build a concrete apron and a concrete driveway back to the property line. For ag properties, we've been allowing gravel and not, quote, improve services like we do on elsewhere. So, again, as those properties go under development and potentially get developed, redeveloped, or a house built on them, we can address those at the building inspections standpoint. Again, there are no letters of support, no letters in opposition. A couple old NOVs that are not related to this plat or change of zone. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Gunner question regarding restrictions involving mobile home use or modular modular building on the lots.
So, UG, UG code allows modular homes so long as they're basically bolted to the ground. The Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan does not prohibit them. It does have a lot, excuse me, a, it has a size requirement, which is not insurmountable if it's a manufactured home. So, I think a manufactured home could meet the standards of the design guidelines within the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan. If you wanted to prohibit them, we could do a D, we could add a condition of approval for a deed restriction to not allow manufactured homes on these four parcels if you wanted to. I think all that staff would ask would be that we work with the applicant on that deed restriction as our county, as our UG council would like to review it before it gets to the Board of Commissioners potentially later this, excuse me, later this month. Actually, December 2nd.
Given the nature and the homes that are around that is, I mean, is Given the nature and the homes that are around that is, I mean, is, can I go, I mean, I guess, I guess I'm the chairman, I guess I can do what I want. But can I go back and talk to the applicant to see if that would be periscope? Would there be any issues with that? Miss Wishop is, would that be, do you have any objections to that?
I, I do not, and I don't think that my client would, but I, I cannot say yes or no indefinitely. Because I have not talked to my client about that.
And my, my concern is just with the, the, the area in which those properties are located. There's, there's a lot of high end homes that are, that are built out there near them. And I'm watching a, I don't know if you want to call it a subdivision or a similar. Type of situ, thing develop out towards Leavenworth County. And they're putting modular homes in. There's three or four of them on a ten acre parcel and it just doesn't look good at all. And I'd hate to see the same thing happen out here.
Absolutely. I absolutely understand your concern a hundred percent. I don't think that, that is, that is not the intent of my client. I know that my client is honestly just looking to sell the property, so.
Sure.
He.
I would think that would, might even make it more saleable to somebody who bought one. Ensuring that something like that couldn't go in on, on neighboring properties. And I have nothing against modular factory built. I think we have to look that way for affordable housing alternatives and things like that. I just don't know that it would be appropriate on a site like this.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
All right, thank you. Other, I'm sorry, Commissioner Conley, I saw your hand up. Did you still want to speak?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. You answered my question.
All right, thank you. So going back to Director Hand, if, if I wanted to add something like this, how would I, how, how would you want me to go about doing that?
I think we would just ask the maker of the motion to include a additional condition. That a deed restriction be placed on all four parcels of the future plat. To. Not allow manufactured homes.
Prohibit modular manufactured type housing, mobile homes.
Again, there's a difference between modular and manufactured homes. I wasn't exactly sure.
Factory built?
That's broader.
Yeah.
And that would work. Would defer to legal counsel to see if we had, if they had any questions or concerns.
Patrick.
No, I, I can't speak to the difference between those types of houses, but we can certainly work out a. Once the motion is made, assuming that is, we can certainly work out the deed restriction by the time of full commission.
All right, thank you. Further questions or clarifications from the director? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the first of two related cases, petition number. C O Z two zero two one dash zero two eight. Subject to staff stipulations and comments with the addition of adding a deed restriction. Not to allow factory built. Housing.
All right, thank you. Gunnar, would that be on the change of zone motion or the plat?
Gunnar Hendrick, our planner, I believe it could be on either, but it should probably be on both.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so the motion is for approval. Subject to staff stipulations with the added covenant of no manufactured housing permitted on said lots. And I have Commissioner Hill, is that a second?
Yes, second, a second.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made a second. Is there any discussion on the motion for approval with said cap, covenant? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I had a question, but I guess you didn't see my hair.
I don't see it up now.
Oh, I took it down.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I guess I'm a little offended by the word of used of, of high end homes. So if it was a, because our homes has a certain value and that value means a lot to a lot of people. So I definitely didn't like that, that comment. That you made as, I guess, as far as it meant a high end home. To every person, the value, there's a value on that home. So if it was been done.
High end home would, would make, that, that depends on, on everybody's perception of what that is, so I don't. I'm sorry that you found it offensive. It was not meant to be offensive. Do you have, do you have a question?
Well, I work in, I work in housing, so what I'm saying is it was very offensive to me. And my question to you is, don't use that anymore.
Well, that's not a question, that's a statement.
Okay, well, don't use that anymore. I mean, it's an area, so if it's in the northeast area, it's a low end home.
Mr. Conley, I'm not going to argue with you or something about something I did not make about different parts of the community. I've just made a statement about that particular area. Okay, so the question, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion before the, before the group? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Holly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application. Subject to the revised conditions passes aid in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I need a motion on the plat, please. Commissioner Jones, you're hot tonight.
Motion to approve the second of two related cases, petition number. Plat two zero two one dash zero one seven. Subject to staff stipulations and comments inclusive of adding a deed restriction not to allow factory built housing.
Thank you. I do want to clarify, when I say you're hot tonight, I mean hot on the button for motions. Thank you.
I'm with you.
Commissioner Hill, is that a second from you?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. It's been moved for approval by Commissioner Jones. Subject to the staff stipulations and the additional covenant regarding factory built homes. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Holly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve a plat with the revised conditions passes aid in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Both of these cases will be heard again on December second at, before the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Jones, did you have a comment?
I do. I just have a set question before we go on to the next case because I was concerned about Commissioner Conley's unreadiness. About the comment that you made, Mr. Chair. And so just as a, as a, I don't know that I'll call it a semantics kind of thing, but maybe so. That if we could talk about things being incompatible versus high end or low end, that that might be better terminology.
That's fine. Again, I want to clarify, there was no intent behind it. It was talking about some of the houses that were around it based on the value of those properties. So, and quite frankly, had the comment made, been made in a different way back to me, my comment back to Commissioner Conley might have been different as well. So. Okay, so let's move on to the next case. Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Change of zone application C O Z twenty twenty-one dash zero three three. Michael Vernon Boom with Hudson Apartments LLC. Change of zone from RP five planned apartment district to RP six planned high rise apartment district. For a new two hundred and twenty-eight unit apartment building at thirty-six hundred Rainbow Boulevard. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting this evening. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baronbaum.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
Michael Baronbaum, Lane Four Property Group, forty-seven oh five Central Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We're very excited about the proposed two hundred twenty-eight unit. Multi-family project at thirty-six and Rainbow. I'm just going to offer a quick introduction and then I'm going to turn things over to Nicole Curry with Studio A Architecture, who is our lead designer. As I mentioned, Lane Four is excited about this project. We believe it really achieves a, a, a central. Goal of the Rosedale Master Plan and bringing high density housing to this corridor. We have very strong sponsorship of, of, of this project. The partnership includes Lane Four, who's developed quite a bit of real estate, including the thirty-nine Rainbow Project up the street at thirty-ninth and Rainbow in the Rosedale neighborhood. Hunt Midwest, who, Brunner Holland, their senior vice president of residential. The residential division, I believe, is here tonight as well. The, the Hunt Midwest is, is owned by the Hunt family, the owner of our Kansas City Chiefs. And we are also partnering on this opportunity with the Kansas University Endowment. All three partners view this as a long-term hold, similar to thirty-nine Rainbow. We plan to build truly a, a first-class project that, that will not just look great upon completion. But also for years and years to come as, as a, a cornerstone of the neighborhood. As residents continue to, to locate in Rosedale. Nicole, we, after Nicole's presentation, we do have a few stipulations that, that we'd like to discuss. But, but before we get into that, Nicole will share some more details about the project. If Janet, we can switch over to her computer. That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm going to promote her to panelist and then. I will, I'm going to show your screen.
Mr. Baronbaum, I need you to mute. Actually, I'll do that. Got you.
Okay, Ms. Curry, you should be ready to go.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we're good now. Thank you.
All right, I will go ahead and share my screen. As Michael was saying, thank you all for letting us present this to you this evening. We are very excited about this project. We love the location and just everything that it has to offer. So I will go ahead and start again, just to familiarize everyone. It is at the intersection of Rainbow and Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-Sixth Street. Near K U Med. So the current location of the Cambridge West Apartments, here are two views of those apartments right now. They're three-story buildings. With the parking on, on site. What we are proposing is a change from the current RP five to RP six. We are, as you saw this I planned before, looking at locating two stories of parking garage with five floors of multifamily above it. All parking will be concealed within the garage, none onsite, other than little areas that would allow for. People such as a Uber driver or an Uber Eats, something of that nature to stop and drop off. All of the rest of the parking is concealed within the garage. We do want to note that on this level, in addition to the garage, to help activate the street. We have located both the leasing office to the north side of the site. And a southern pedestrian entry that'll have the mailroom, a lobby space and some other amenities to the south side of the site. You can kind of see in this kind of pinky orange color. That is also a pedestrian terrace on that first level, again, helping to activate the street. The red line that you're seeing over the top, it's actually the extent of the building. It is, at this entry point, it's actually two stories above. We are going into a hillside here. And so you will, to access the parking garage, you do drive under the building. As we stated before, going from RP five to RP six, it's a five-story apartment building, just wrapping a courtyard over two floors of parking. Two hundred and twenty-eight units and two hundred and sixty pieces. So just to kind of show the understanding, this is turned ninety degrees. What we are looking at here is what the first floor looks like. We do have an open courtyard. It will have amenities such as pool. Game areas, grill pit, grill areas, fire pit areas. We have other amenities such as a fitness facility and a fifth floor terrace for the residents. Here are some renderings of what the project looks like. We have a very, on the first two floors of the building where the parking is located. A very strong base of brick with an introduction to kind of soften that brick of the wood paneling. Up above is a two-tone fiberglass panel with additional undulations of floor to ceiling. Windows in two locations of stair towers as well as our balcony offsets in a different material again to help. For the breakup the elevations of the building. So this view here is from the northeast corner with that drive-through under the building. Here you are seeing from the southeast perspective. And there you can see the entry point into the pedestrian lobby with K U Med being to the south of the site. We really feel this will be the main location for entry and exit of tenants who live in the building and worked or visiting. Other uses to the south. The parking garage is, does have access from both of the north and south entry points. And I do want to note that these entry points align with the current curb cuts onsite. So there will not have to be any rework to the parking, to the stoplight or to those curb cuts. Here is a close-up of the entry near the leasing office. Another close-up of the terrace area on the first floor. We do not have the courtyard fully finalized, but this is kind of showing what it could look like with the pool inside. Trying to have it as open as possible, as much light as we can get into the space. And then final, this is what the fifth floor terrace would look like. And we really had some fun with this one. We actually took a drone up. To the height of this to get some views of what you would actually see. So these are actual views from this terrace space. As Mike was talking about, there are a couple stipulations that we would like to change some wording to or look at more in depth. The first one being the requirements of parking no less than twenty-five feet from any street and no less than six feet from any property line. We'd like to make that with the exception of the North Fire Lane. I'm going to flip back to slide, or, sorry, slide four here. With the way this site works and the fact that we have this bluff on the backside of the building, we cannot get a fire truck back here. We do need fire truck access on all sides. So even though this driveling here is only. One way, we do need the ability to get a fire truck there in twenty-six feet of surface area. So with that in mind, we are closer, we are about two and a half feet from the property line here as opposed to six feet. However, on the south, we are at that six foot. So that would be the correction or the addition we are looking for for that stipulation. Back, the next one we are looking at is stipulation ten. We would just like to add to the stipulation. That on those ground levels for parking, that the open area into the parking garage, which does not contain glazing. Be allowed to count towards that forty percent on those levels. The next stipulation is stipulation number twelve, which talks about the two hundred feet of, for a residential building. We would actually like this stipulation to be admitted. The length along, along the street for this building is three hundred and thirteen feet. To get a courtyard in a wrap-style building like you were seeing in that upper, the first floor. We need to be able to be greater than the two hundred feet or else our courtyard would be sixty feet by sixty feet and would get virtually no sunlight into it. We did take into account the fact of this two hundred foot and these offsets, especially on the ground floors where we have, as you can see here. From the profile on the ground floor, there's a lot of push and pull to this site. None of those areas are even more than a hundred and five feet. And the offset, the least amount of offset we have here is eighteen foot. So on that pedestrian level, this is not a flat building. It has some curves, it has this undulation. And then on the upper floors, we have. And then on the upper floors, we have these floor-to-ceiling glass elements, one here, and then there's one further back there that break these into smaller areas. And we also have the balconies going forward or up from all the way through with a different material, again, helping to break up the length of this building. I do want to note that we are at about two hundred feet front to back on the site. It's just along this frontage that we are greater than the than the two hundred feet. The next stipulation we wanted to talk about was downspouts. We would like to change this to have an exception for the downspouts in the interior courtyard. All downspouts that are on the perimeter of the building, though, would still be internalized. And finally, with regards to stipulation fifteen, we agree with the spirit of the stipulation, although we have some concerns with it being a deed restriction. And we would like to propose instead a tree preservation area be added to the plat. That area would be able to be further defined at the time of final development plan. Those are, with the exception of those, we are in agreements with all other stipulations and would like to open it up to questions.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or opposition to this request? And I've got Erin Strika. Go ahead, Erin. I got you queued up to speak.
Hi, this is Erin Strika with Rosedale Development Association at fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Rosedale Development Association supports this proposal. The Rosedale Master Plan points to the need for more denser housing on particular corridors and centers in Rosedale to accommodate the growth of KU Health System and Medical Center and the quickly growing popularity of Rosedale as a place to live, while also preserving what's great about the neighborhood for those who are already here. Since the master plan was adopted, there have been a couple of proposals for denser housing that weren't in line with the plan and with the desires and needs of the neighborhood that nearby residents have opposed. But as I've talked with Rosedaleans about this proposal, there's been this sense that kind of, okay, this is what we were picturing when we sat in all those public meetings while the master plan was being written. This is one of the things that we've been kind of waiting for. We're excited that it follows the master plan, particularly in location, building that higher-density housing on Rainbow, which is one of our mixed-use corridors and mostly in design, although I have a question about that, that I'll I'll come to at the end. The only reservation I've heard from neighbors is that this is very high-quality, highly amenitized housing. We haven't heard how much rent will be, but I definitely get the sense that it'll be out of my budget and out of the budget of many of our existing neighbors. So what I'm hearing is that there's a big, big need for this project, but there's also still a big unmet need for housing serving all income levels, and that's always important to keep in mind. That said, we see this project as a great step forward for the neighborhood toward implementing the master plan, and we're really excited to support it and to see it happen. I do have one question for the applicant that didn't come up in the neighborhood meeting. I am wondering if the commission doesn't decide to admit the two hundred-foot stipulation. I wonder how they'd plan to meet that along with the other stipulations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Any other, sorry.
I didn't know if you wanted me to respond to that question.
If you'd like to. I don't see anybody else ready to speak, so go ahead, please.
The way that we, I mean, with a building like this, it is very challenging to meet that two hundred-foot stipulation for a a wrapped project like this and keep a courtyard that is adequate in size. I think the only thing we could look at is are there ways? I mean, I think we'd really have to go back to the drawing board on that to see if there were, if there were things that we could do and work with staff on to to try to meet the intent of the two hundred feet, but without breaking up the building, because making it smaller unfortunately gives it a footprint that does not work for a courtyard.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the, you know, these will be market rate units, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
Then that's correct. This will be a a market-rate project.
Thank you. And Erin, your your comments about affordable housing is is always is taken very seriously. So appreciate you making that one. So any other questions from the audience or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments.
This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this case is being heard in conjunction with Bozakase twenty twenty-one zero one six, which was approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. As the applicant mentioned, this is going from RP five to RP six, essentially due to density and not so much height of the building. It is in the Rosedale Area Master Plan, as was mentioned. We do ask them to meet both the multifamily design guidelines and all the multifamily design guidelines within the Rosedale Area Master Plan. In regards to the specific stipulations, number four is a code section. So you can't deviate from that. You have to seek a variance, but I believe there is a different code section related to established setbacks where we could probably make that work without meeting the intent of that code section as cited in this case without having to remove or change it. So code section twenty-seven six thirty-eight A establishes setbacks. I think we could make that work for the intent of that section. So I do not recommend we change that. I think we let that stay. Ten, twelve, and fourteen are really deviations from design guidelines. Commissioner Hill and others, as a reminder, for design guidelines, except for one design guideline, then there are a lot of design guidelines. But for all other design guidelines, those are deviations that the applicant has to request of you, the City Planning Commission, to adhere to regarding each one. I don't think you have to change anything in ten, because those windows do apply. They just wanted clarification of that or of it, that the that the windows, if you will, for into the parking garage would count. They do. So that's just a point of clarification. So I don't think you need to change that one at all. Number twelve, as it relates to two hundred feet, it does not meet that currently, because of the size of the building, because of the shape of the lot. There are other ways you could think about it, but again, that deviation is up to the Planning Commission, and I'd be happy to take questions. My only thought is there's potentially a way to make that southern, what would that be, the southeastern corner? If it is the true entrance of the building, there's potentially something they could do on that corner to help break out that straight facade. Essentially, what you have here, guys, is a is a parking podium, and everything above that bar or below that bar is a parking structure, and everything above it is apartments and amenities. And so I believe there's this design solution and everything. This does require a final development plan, so we could figure this out between now and then. If you so choose, and we don't have to necessarily hold this one over because of that specific one as well, my recommendation would be to instead of is to try to meet the intent of twelve by creating some level of pronouncing the entrance along that whole facade, that southwest corner. I think that would meet the intent of the code. Again, we could work with the applicant on that if you so choose. Fourteen is fine if they only want to include that on the, not include internalizing downspouts on the courtyard. That's fine. All we really care about is the exterior of the building anyway. I don't know how nice that'll look on the inside for the courtyard, but again, that's technically your call as the planning commission to deviate from the design guidelines. And then number fifteen, I'm certainly open to anything other than a deed restriction. It just feels like a deed restriction is a lot easier. At the end of the day, we don't want that ever developed. And that's a part of this deal, and that's how we see it.
Thank you, Mr. Hand. On, just just to clarify, on on the corner you're concerned with, what we're looking at here on the screen, I believe, is is the north end of the building. Are you referring to the south end?
I apologize. I may have misspoken. Yes, I meant the south end.
So you you'd like to say?
Page, no, page left. Sort of, I guess, the, what I would say is, in the way that you break up the facade with the deck on the northwest corner, that's one design move. I think to break up the the straight two hundred feet across would be to figure out a way to pronounce the entry through the elevation of the building on that southwest corner. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what that means, but I think that that would meet the intent of the code if you made that look like. Again, I don't want to get old-timey on you, but if that was more like the corner of the corner lot, and then there was the rest of the building, I think that would break the two, the three hundred, three hundred-plus facade into maybe not exactly two hundred feet, but again, it would meet the intent. That would be my recommendation to my planning commission, but again, it's it's your deviation to ask of them. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, and and on the deed restriction, as Nicole said, we we agree with you in spirit. You know, if you, if you, if anybody's familiar with the site, as you go down the hill on Rainbow, there's a big cliff right on the on the west side behind this building. At the top of that building is a parking lot owned by the Kansas Porter Regents. It seems about a hospital. There's nothing on our property that we could develop on the top of that cliff. Cliff, I think we were just a little unfamiliar with with a deed restriction of this nature and wouldn't want to cloud up title a- as as we intend to be involved with this project for decades, decades to come. So I think we are on the same page in terms of of intent and and just have a question of semantics on our hands.
I can have staff reach out to you tomorrow to get that moving. If we do settle on a deed restriction, we we'd like to take it to the Board of Commissioners if this moves forward on December second. But to your point, I think we can, we can, if you want to choose a different tool and talk to staff and legal counsel in particular about that, I think that could wait till final development plan if need be. We don't have to rush to it if you guys don't want to do a deed restriction. I'm not sure what another mechanism would be, but we're we're open to it.
Let's have that discussion and and work together prior to final development plan to get that worked out.
Okay.
That works for the commission.
So if if I may, Commissioner, Chairman, I would say number fifteen should read added deed restriction or other mechanisms, either were legal. Help me, Mr. Waters. Legal mechanism?
Legal restriction, sure, yeah.
So that would leave it open. We could pass it now. And again, if you wanted to specifically clarify that it didn't have to happen until the final development plan, that's fine. I think we can assume that as well, because all of these conditions will just be carried over to the final development plan anyway.
Janet, are are you clear about what the gentlemen are wanting to do or insert? Because you have to keep the minutes.
Um, I get, have the pleasure of going back and listening to the entire meeting, so, yeah, I'll have it.
I felt a little hijacked there for a moment between those two, but I think we're we're circling back. Okay. Okay, are there questions for the director? Yes, Commissioner Ernst. And and Mr. Connelly, have you joined us back? Are you back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Want to make sure. Okay, here we go. Commissioner Ernst.
In short, Gunnar, left in your very capable hands and without much of our input, you think that you can craft what they're looking for and end up with a really nice finished product down there?
On all points, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Because it looks pretty good the way they're presenting it. So if it doesn't, then we're going to put it back on your shoulders, Gunnar.
Understood.
Okay, other questions for the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
I can continue being on a roll. I'll take that position.
I was watching for you.
So so let me see if I got, if I took this all in straight. So motion to approve. Oh, now I lost my place. Motion to approve. Hang on just a second. Change of zone case number two zero two one dash zero three three, subject to staff stipulations and comments with the modification of stipulation number fifteen to include leaving the deed restriction as is or adding another legal restriction with regard to the preservation of the topography.
Does that say it, Gunnar?
Uh, I would also amend number fourteen to say all street-facing downspouts shall be internalized.
Okay. Also adding to my motion, the downspot spout modification.
Street-facing downspouts be internalized.
Yes, street-facing downspouts be internalized.
Let's, how about exterior facing?
Exterior-facing downspouts be internalized.
Thank you. That was a team effort, so I appreciate that. Commissioner Jones, that motion has been made. And Commissioner Hill, do I see a second from you?
Add to second.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any for approval? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Paulie?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Hill?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the conditions in the staff report with the amendments to conditions fourteen and fifteen passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, December second, seven PM, before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is change of zone COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero three five. Marcella Zamora. Change of zone from R one Single Family District to AG Agriculture District to build accessory structures and farming activity at four four nine North eighty-sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopting master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the one dot echo and the notices to property owners. This time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Marcella, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
Hello, I'm speaking with my wife, Marcella Zamora. So our proposal is to change the zoning from R one to
Hey, sir, what what is your name?
My name's Juan Pardo.
Okay, thank you.
And so our proposal is to change the zoning from R one to agricultural. We have intentions of utilizing our land for farming farming activities and also to build a accessory building more like a twenty-five-hundred square feet garage for storing our tractor and farming equipment. And that's basically, that's basically our our proposal.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this case for or against? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand, get his comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, as the applicant mentioned, this is a change of zone from R one to AG. It's a little less than twenty-acre parcel, so it meets all the standards for the agricultural district. This is in the midtown area. There it is not in a currently in an area plan just north of I seventy off of eighty-sixth Street. You can, sorry, it's a little fuzzy. You can see it shaped here. It's an odd shape because of I seventy right away, as well as eighty-sixth Street right away. The staff does have a couple of conditions of approval based on the proposed use of the property. We've had this in several instances. We added a couple of standard conditions specifically for any accessory structures, making sure it's understood that those accessory structures can only be used for the purposes um those accessory structures can only be used um for the purposes of maintaining the land uh or agriculture uses on the land. We've had a couple of cases um not too dissimilar from this where people were concerned that those buildings, those accessory structures would be used for commercial businesses, I E. Storage of heavy equipment not used on site. Um, so we've created a standard condition. We added that standard conditions included in this um condition of approval. We also asked that the applicant screen, um I'm going to go back to the aerial screen, uh the property to the east um so that there was some layer of landscaping uh between uh future agricultural uses and um the single family subdivision to the east. We asked for the same uh type of screening on the southern property line along I seventy. Again, if we're talking about agricultural practices, depending on what they are. Um, they didn't say they wanted any livestock, although they can have livestock with an A G uh zone property. Um, uh, we asked for screening on the southern property, on the southern boundary as well. There's an existing tree stand. You can kind of see it right here, and although the aerial doesn't show it very well, there's a, there's a natural drainage area that kind of is in the bottom southwest quadrant of the property. We asked that that be maintained, I E. They don't go those it. There's some natural drainage and uh being happening right there that that serves the site and the adjacent areas. Um, so we didn't ask that that be disturbed. Um additionally, um, we asked that if livestock were ever proposed for the property, that they seek a conservation plan for said livestock accordingly. That's in, that's in protocol with uh other policies. Um, we did add that just to, just to be clear uh moving forward, but Steph had no letters of support. No letters in opposition. There are a couple of very old notices of violations on the property, but none related to this uh case or this proposal. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, stand for a motion. Commissioner Miller?
Move to approve subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Thank you. Motion approved made by Commissioner Miller. Uh, Commissioner Paulie, is that a second?
Second, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly, did you have a question?
Just a second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll, roll call.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I'm.
Muller?
I.
Paulie?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Conley?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application with the staff's conditions passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This case will be heard once again on December second uh at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next change of zone is C O Z twenty twenty one dash zero three six. Douglas Strand, change of zone from C O non retail business district to R two two family district for a single family residence at twenty two eleven North thirteenth street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopting master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November eighth, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo, the notices to property owners. Excuse me, and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Strand, welcome and go ahead and give us your name again, please, and tell us about this project.
My name is Douglas Strand and this project, we are converting this property which was vacant for several years. Um, it was being used last as a medical building and we're proposing to convert it into a three bedroom, three bath residence that will be a primary residence for myself and my partner. And we are attempting to keep the exterior of the building um as intact as possible. We do really like the historic, the nineteen sixty five architecture of the building um with the huge canopies. Um, and we're doing everything we can to keep the exterior looking as historically accurate as possible.
Great, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone in a tent? I'm going to go ahead and go to the public. Is anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close and we'll go to Director Hand for his brief comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This case was heard, is being heard in conjunction with those a case twenty twenty one zero two nine, which was approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a change of zone from uh C O non retail business district to R P two plan two family. Again, we chose R P two because it's what most of the zone, all of the zone, adjacent zoning for residential is. You can see it on the area here, right at the corner of thirteenth and Waverly. Uh, there is an R one to the south, but again, the commercial nature of the building um and the higher density of the surrounding neighborhood, I think R one is the outlier here, not the, not the norm. Um, you can see some pictures of the property here. We did have a couple of conditions of approval. The applicant mentioned that again, it's old enough to be historic. It's not been surveyed or it's not been designated. We don't know if it's eligible. Um, but we also like the old nineteen sixty five's canopies and uh the applicant's approach to preserve uh that type of character in this uh redevelopment project. There are some renderings that I'll share with you now. Um, that uh the applicant has of their proposed house. Essentially, they're, you know, reusing most of what's already there and repurposing it. Um, again, they got three variances earlier uh this evening. Um, specifically, there's a couple of things that we had asked for, some sidewalk repair um around the property. We also asked, there are currently two curb cuts on Waverly. We asked that one of them be removed. It would be sort of this one, if you will, um which kind of currently comes in and through underneath that canopy down here. They're turning that into essentially their side yard, if you will. Um, so we asked that one of those be closed and repaired and the curb be built accordingly. Um, staff had also had a condition for revised site plan to show some of those improvements that reflect what is in the um renderings. Uh, we got lots of elevations, but we didn't get a site plan to reflect that. We believe we can pick that up at the building permit stage in uh Development Review Committee, and so we don't necessarily need that to move forward with this case. Uh, again, there are no letters of support, no letters of opposition, some very old N O Bs unrelated to this proposed project on the property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for the director? Gunner, things like the uh just uh just looking at this last photograph with the uh, the uh roof mounted A C system, is that something that's we get into parapets and all that kind of stuff? Is anything that's of any issue for anything like this?
Because they're changing the zone to residential, it doesn't require screening, but um and I forgot to mention, I apologize, but one of our conditions of approval are if this ever becomes a commercial use again, that we seek a rezoning back to either C one. Again, we're moving forward with R two because the applicant needs that zoning or financing to move forward. Um, we're not a hundred percent sure if they need that after they have the financing, so we did put a clause in there to make sure that we understood in future long future, um, long, long term future that that we understand that this is, this is a, essentially it's a commercial building with a residential use. So if it were to ever revert back and those units were those H vac units were ever, were still on the roof, they would need to be screened accordingly. They do not need to be screened as a R two zone.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for the uh director? Commissioner Jones?
I would, I would point out that the, the applicant's architect seemed to have raised his hands. I don't
Okay, so, okay, let's go to Commissioner Jones, then we'll go to Commissioner Connolly, and then we'll go to uh Mr. Shanks. Commissioner Jones?
I was just going to ask real quick in terms of how that's kept back of, if it goes back from residential to commercial, is that through the D process?
Um, we wrote it in a certain way that basically just points to if it were to ever um come back for if an, if a commercial use of the property was ever proposed, whether it was Mr. Strand or a future owner of the house wanted to stay, have a home occupation. This condition approval would trigger a rezone as opposed to just go through the process of either an S U P, for instance, potentially, or even what is allowed some by right, which is some level of home occupation, as long as it's a, you know, like an office type of use. So we, we basically created a trigger to go back to C one, which is what we would prefer. Ultimately, the parcel be zoned. Again, if it was zones C one, like right now, it wouldn't work because the applicant couldn't get their financing, but let's say they hypothetically could get their financing. It could be C one and you can have a residential use in a C one zone.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Connolly?
My question was answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gunner, going back to that, um, so, but the mechanism that you've got there, if somebody wanted to would there be any type of commercial uses permitted, you know, special use in home daycare, um anything like that without a converting back?
Let me go to the exact language for you. I think I did include it, yeah. I think it's number five. Yes, the, the way it's written, it's any commercial use.
And I, I guess I'm just going back to some of these problems that we've had with other properties. So, you know, if, if the, if the property were to be sold, there's not going to be anything that's a recorded instrument that so if, if a new owner bought it and decided they wanted to have a daycare or they wanted to uh, I don't know, design houses from their, their home or something like that, it would not be allowed, correct?
Following your uh hypothetical, the a daycare will require an S U P. We would research the property and say not only do you need an S U P, you need to change zone.
Okay, so it would require another change of zone. Okay. I, I'm just concerned down the road when, you know, we've already had one property that's changed hands several times and not that we didn't have building permits and things like that. We, we have these conversations. I don't want to put us in, in our, in a position of approving something that ten years down the road, we're seeing another. Um, how would I have known that this, you know, I wasn't going to be able to watch, you know, have, watch three children in my house and have a special use permit unless it was disclosed to me under the special use. Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, I would uh state um just so everyone knows, we now publish change of zone ordinances. Um, and what we have for a while, so they, um, that is a way that someone could track that down. So there is a, there is a public, a publication of these that
Okay, so there is a mechanism. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go, going to go uh back to the architect, Mr. Shanks. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point on the comment about the rooftop unit in that one picture.
Uh huh.
All rooftop units will be removed.
Okay.
And the only, to go back with a uh duckless mini split and the cassette way smaller and they're in the center of the building and I don't even think you'll be able to see it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else for Director Hand? Saying none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
I, I think this is a great repurpose of, of property uh in this particular area, and so I make a motion to approve petition subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly, is that your second?
Yes, that's my second.
Okay, so it moved to seconded for approval. Motion made by Commissioner Jones and seconded by Commissioner Connolly. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones?
I.
Miller?
I.
Muller?
I.
Paulie?
I.
Armstrong?
I.
Conley?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application subject to the conditions of the staff passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on December second at seven, yes, December second at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, our next change of zone application is C O Z twenty twenty one dash zero four two. Rachel Bacara with Good News Reynolds LLC. Change of zone from R one B single family district to R two B two family district to bring existing nonconforming duplex into compliance at seven thirty one Tenny Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachment stated November eighth, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Bacara, I've got you queued up to speak. Whoever's going to, just give us your name and address, please.
This is Rachel Bichara, seven three one Tenny Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yeah, so what we're doing is pretty simple. Uh, my husband and I bought this property a few years ago um as a duplex and we recently found out that it was zoned improperly, so um it's been used as a functioning duplex for decades, so nothing is going to change other than um we are just trying to be in compliance with the city after we found out that it wasn't done properly.
Okay, thank you. And you've read the staff report, the recommendations, and and you're okay with all of those?
Yes, yeah, we've already started working on those. Uh, we already got one of them accomplished.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Saying none, we'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is a uh change of zone from R one B to R two B to meet a existing nonconforming uh building in use. This is located in the central area master plan area right uh south of Tenny Avenue. It's an interesting lot, and I'll show you here in just a second. These are a couple of the pictures of the existing building. One of the, you can see the two um doors on the, on the structure here. Um, just a couple more photos. This is the rear of the property. You can see the quote driveway here, which I'll get to here in just a second. What I really wanted to show you was the Sanborn map. The Sanborn maps are basically fire maps from the nineteen fifty six, I believe, is the date. That's the oldest record that we have um for a lot of properties. This is the property here. This is the property adjacent that is currently a land bank property. It was always supposed to be a park. So just a little fun fact right there. Um, also, the two and two B means it's, this has always been since at least nineteen fifty six. Uh, we had a hard time tracking down the building permits to show if it was ever separated into two, but the farthest documentation we got on the building, that two B and two means it's always been a two bedroom house, two unit house. Um, you can see the property adjacent to it. That's one, and there used to be a carriage house in the back. That's one. That used to be a unit as well. So that's what all that sounds. Um, so the, we do have a couple of conditions of approval related to this. We asked that they repair the sidewalk. There's an existing kind of buried under the grass uh brick sidewalk on the south side of Tenny Avenue in front of the property that we asked them to sort of unearth. Um, additionally, we asked that they um replace, uh do some replacement on one of the windows. This is a older neighborhood. So meaning in the character of the neighborhood, I believe that is one of the conditions that the applicant has already met. Uh, they went in there and they replaced the window to be the original size. Um, again, those are small things, but at the end of the day, that's what create a collectively sort of a more coherent neighborhoods, certainly provides us, creates greater uh, let's sort of say historic continuation of building designs and uses. Um, uh, one of the other conditions of approval that we uh discussed with the applicant um was related to the driveway, and I'll go back to that picture here just for a second. So currently, the property ends right at the property line. And this is technically um an alleyway, but it's an alleyway, and I'm going to go back to all the plot lines aren't there. Shucks. Um, this this alley right here north of Tenny ends at a utility easement behind North of Tenny ends at a utility easement behind this first row of houses on the south side of Tenny. This is not an alleyway. It's a very small public utility easement. So this alleyway effectively goes nowhere. So what we have done is added to allow the applicant to move forward now with the changes on as opposed to grouping them together. We we worked it out where a condition of approval would be to come back and seek a vacation of that parcel. I mentioned that the adjacent lot is owned by the land bank. We've had the discussions, staff has had discussions with the land bank. They are agreeable to if approved for vacation that. The land bank's half would go to the applicant and effectively restore what they've been using as their driveway for quite some time, even before this. Most current owner who's before us tonight. So in the interim, I would just ask that. Depending on when they file for said vacation, which I believe they did.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's right. So they don't need a right away permit per se. They can, in the act of trying to vacate the property, that will suffice for. For the unified government for it. So it's a bit of a workaround. All of that is to say, we've received no, actually, we have received letter support. Let me just make sure. We have received a letter of support. We've received no letters in opposition. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for the director? Commissioner Jones.
Gunnar, in effect, would they apply for that vacation would then affect some point be incorporated into their deed?
It broke up just a little bit. Commissioner Jones, could you repeat your question, please?
Sure. If if vacation is requested and approved, would. That somehow be incorporated there going forward for that what's essentially a driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll become, yeah, that that whole, again, because we've worked it out with land bank and they're willing to give the whole. Right away that that is currently an alleyway to the applicant, that would more than suffice for the required parking for this building and it would get incorporated, yes, into their. Into their D. It basically becomes a note on their property.
It's a recorded instrument that's picked up during the title search that shows that a vacation of an easement was made on the property.
That'd be a pretty nice silver lining behind there. And it's a good thing they've been willing to be in compliance with that. So that'd be a nice. Go along.
The applicant has worked extensively with staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Connolly, your hand was up?
I was just gonna make a second. I thought Mr. Jones is so fast.
Okay, do you want to do you want to make a motion? I'll stand for that motion.
Okay, I'm I can make a motion that we approve with staff stipulations.
Okay, motion for approval made by Commissioner Connolly, Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. I just wanted to hear your voice. Okay, great. So it's been moved by Commissioner Connolly, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong for approval. In this case, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Muller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Armstrong.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Hill.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the conditions on the staff report. Passes aid in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on December 2 at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you both for being here.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is a special use permit, SP 2021 dash zero four six. Mayor Hernandez, special use permit for two horses on residential property at 1315 North 86th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November 8, 2021. The application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Inference of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Or Mrs. Hernandez, are you in the audience? I don't. Someone there to represent this case, please raise your hand. Mayra Hernandez. And nobody's raising their hand. So Janet, can we go ahead and push this to the bottom of our agenda and we'll come back to it after the next couple of cases?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Our next application is plant 2021 dash zero one eight. Estates of Connor Creek, fourth flat. Preliminary plot for 70 residential lots at 5209 North 101st Terrace. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated November 8, 2021. The application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Inference of the case and contained in the official file. And the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Jose Maderos or anyone representing Jose Maderos? There we go.
Mr. Chair, real quick, if I may, I just wanted to make the point that. Mr. Byron Toy lives in Connor Creek Estates. He has recused himself from this agenda item. He has not worked on this case with staff.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wishup, I've got you queued up. I'm assuming you're speaking on behalf of the development company?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Maderos there.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is a, in addition, obviously, to Connor Creek Estates over there off of a Hutton Road. This is a going to be a very, a pretty good sized subdivision. There already is a an approved. Preliminary plot for this that was done. Gunnar, you might have to correct me, but maybe 15 years ago or so. But it does not meet the requirements of the master, the Piper Delaware Master Plan. And so. We've been working with the planning department for a few months here to get this all in accordance and everything. And I think that we come up with a pretty good plan. For this property.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Saying none, anyone in the audience want to speak? I see Scott Dias Diaz. Go ahead, please.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Scott Dias. You had it correct first. So kudos to you. 10207 North Miller Lane, and I live in Connor Creek Estates. I guess that's called the north section. I have several concerns. One is the initial, and I think it's you're correct, it's about 14, 15 years old. Only had had been planned and set out for. A one exit and entrance. 70 more houses would definitely. Make the streets in front of my house. Probably fairly congested. At most times, I'm worried about the safety of the children. And I'm. Worried about, you know. Utility and or safety vehicles coming up and down. The second concern is house prices. I'll I'll just. Mention that briefly. And then the. The third concern is there's three lots in the original that. Are still not occupied. And then there's three lots being. Upgraded, I guess you could say, or built on. And those have taken an extremely long amount of time. I'm worried about the traffic, the congestion, the noise, the pollution, whatever. And that's it.
Okay, just have a couple of questions for you for clarification. You expressed concern about home prices and in in what way?
Well, initially, we had an HOA. We do no longer have an HOA and. I believe two of the three houses that are currently being built are lower in in. Area and lower in cost than than the houses around them, including mine. And I'm I'm concerned that in addition of 70 new houses, if they're at a lower. Cost or lower price than ours currently. I know house prices are going up. But let's say the average is 10% and the. I'm concerned that the addition of 70 new houses potentially at a lower cost might might. Allow ours not to go up at the rate of of the real estate around us.
Okay, and then you expressed concern about the three lots that are still being developed. Is there an issue with those three lots that are being built on now?
Yes, there's been. Vehicles, construction noise. Debris blowing into our yards, et cetera. And I know that these have been in construction for more than nine months. Probably over a year at this point. I'm I'm not, I haven't checked.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
And just the safety and congestion without the. An extra entrance or exit road to the. To the entire development.
We'll try to get you some answers that that those that that one, I think we can get you some answers to. So we'll 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 ask those questions when we get to the appropriate individual. Okay. Matthew Francis.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Matt Francis. I'd like to share my screen if I could. I don't know how to do that, or you have to let me square share my screen?
Okay, and why don't you give us your address, please?
Yeah, I'm at 10,000 Hollingsworth Road, and that's why I wanted to share the screen to show you the development and where I live. I own.
Give me just a second here and I'll. Give you permission to share your screen.
Mr. Francis, you muted yourselves.
Sorry about that. Here I am.
Okay.
How do I? Let me just see. Share screen.
Just a moment.
We're getting you. We're getting you moved over here.
Okay, you should be okay now.
Okay, share screen. Try again. Share screen. He. Sorry. My sharing screen. Can you see that? Can you see the map now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so the Mr. Maderos's property is right here. The 50 some acres. I personally own this 40 acres south of the property. And kind of disregard these drawings because these are just kind of mockups. I mean, this land is, this was part of the old original Connor Creek. But I I own this property here, 40 acres directly south of Mr. Madero. I also own this 60 acres over here where my cursor is. And my home is there. That's where I live. I've lived here since 2017. And. I also own this 10 acre lot. Maybe I can move this up a little bit. I also own this 10 acre lot right here with the idea was when. I bought this property was to be able to someday take Connor Creek and continue it all the way to a Hutton Road down here. So I purchased this home in this lot right here, in addition to this property and this property. And so just what I wanted to tell you is I support Mr. Madero's. Development. And we have talked about Mr. Madero having myself have a. A cul-de-sac and, you know, the cul-de-sac temporary one would end on my property, which I am more than fine with. Long term, I don't really know exactly how this development will work out if it'll be all single family houses or smaller lots like we're showing. My question or issue is that. I would like to see. Another road come over here and connect to. My brother's property, who is also online, JJ Francis. I don't know if he raised his hand yet, but. The idea is that long term, together with the 40 acres that he owns right here. And the 60 acres that I own here, we would someday be able to connect a road. Down to Hollingsworth Road and. Exactly what that gentleman was talking about, having, instead of having all the property go back out to the, you know, to this way. Someday, and again, this is a long, long term, that we would have a road that comes down through here and goes to here. I've been working with some. Planning, well, some of the same planning people he's talking to. And so I would support it 100%. I would ask that. The the council consider. A roadway ending right here so that someday in the future, we could pick up that roadway and continuing to, you know, develop this out. In the future. So that's my comments.
Okay, but you are not are you're not affiliated with this developer, correct?
No, I'm. I am not. Mr. Maderos bought the north end of the original Connor Creek Flat. I bought the south end of it and my brother bought a part of it, but I'm not part of.
You are a neighboring property only.
I'm a neighboring property correctly. Correct, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Did miss, let's see, let's go over and Mr. JJ Francis. Did you want to speak?
Yes, so why he's got that up. The original estates of Connor Creek.
Go ahead and give me your address, please, Mr. Francis.
312 Park Lane, South St. Paul, Minnesota.
Okay.
So originally, when I purchased this property, it had. Already been zoned and set up for the estates of Connor Creek with high density residential housing. And as they spoke before, that's kind of changed a little bit with the. With the new codes or whatnot. But again, what we're looking at here is. Making sure that we have access to have. The housing continue on like the original plan was. And I don't have the original plan in front of me. But definitely was a lot more houses than than what's in there at this moment. So we would follow whatever rules or whatever. Whatever they would want us to do to to set the. Lots correctly, but what I'm asking for is right where the properties are connected to have the have a city road sewer water. Be delivered to this point. As we were talking about before, so that we could continue to develop that land in the future.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We will go to Director Hand for his comments.
Gunnar Hendrick, our plan and urban design. Bring back the screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so again, this is for originally the original. South Connor Creek Estates development started out at 70. It ended up at 55 additional parcels. The way that staff had calculated this was essentially as phase two of the Connor Creek Estates project. So we combined. What is currently Connor Creek with concrete stuff to do things like density calculations and amenities and things of that interest. We did use those to move forward. Specifically, well, hey, let me do the whole spiel. Again, this is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area master plan. It's in area two. I believe I got that right. Area two of the. Master plan area, which has a minimum square footage of 1,750 square feet for each house. You can see, again, I apologize for the fuzzy picture, but south of Hutton Road is what we're talking about, essentially directly south of existing Connor Creek Estates. There are a couple of pictures that show sort of where the road ends on 131st 101st. There's also where the road ends at 103rd right here as well. Both of these get tied back into the proposed development. You can see it here. Essentially, this is an exhibit with Connor, the existing Connor Creek Estates to page right. And off of this new, this is 101st existing comes down, comes across to this new road and. Comes across to this new road and then back up. So there are more than one entry and exit point to address the issue brought up by the. Neighbor earlier in this agenda item. I would also point to the fact that. In the approval, staff notes all the design guidelines as it relates to not just amenities for developed subdivisions, but. Sort of the design of those houses. There's a couple of things in there, I think, that directly address the concerns of. The neighbor in terms of materiality. How they front load garages or not, and other issues that again are a part of the condition of this approval. For moving forward. Staff had worked with the applicant on this for as they, as Ms. Wish if had mentioned quite some time, we went through a couple iterations. Trying to reduce the impact on the natural environment, trying to cluster development. And at the end of the day, we think we got a much better subdivision accordingly. We received, I actually have a question myself for the applicant. We received an email this morning, Ms. Wish, based on what. Was just discussed, is the temporary cul-de-sac on the south end of the property. Still in the adjacent property, or do you propose to move it inside your existing property line?
As of right now, we're still wanting it to be on the adjacent property, you know, as long as both parties can agree to the terms of that. It's just, I I just was not sure. If we were going to be able to come to agreeable terms, so I wanted to have a backup plan, but it sounded like after talking to Mister Francis and Mister Maderos this morning. Or later this afternoon, that we probably would be able to come to agreeable terms there. But I just, I just wanted to make sure that I had a backup plan in case things went south.
Okay, I think. This is going to handle your plan and resign. Considering that, I think we can move forward with this. If there are any changes, the applicant can always come back and refile an amended final plan. To make any adjustments, but Ms. Wish up just as a, to close the loop on that. If it does move back into your property, we would have to develop, we that we need a new plan to see that, and we'd have to develop some level of condition. This happens all the time with these types of subdivisions. We basically would just limit development on those adjacent parcels. Until either that part, until either that temporary roundabout became permanent, or it got extended farther south and was no longer there. So that's, that's basically what we're talking about, moving forward for your clients' edification. With that, I I may not have answered all the questions, so you might need to come back to Minister Chair, but. Steph received no letters of support. I don't believe I heard any opposition in the public testimony today, more questions and concerns than. Opposition or support. There are no NOBs on the property. Staff recommends approval. As it relates to the adjacent property to the right, I. Based on the records I'm looking at, I don't think that was a part of the original preliminary plan. So the subdivision, basically. The subdivision code. There's a lot of sort of dead end streets, if you will. And the expectation is adjacent properties that get developed connect to those dead end streets, and that's where we keep it. I don't think Mister Maderos has an obligation to. Add a new street, an additional utility to support adjacent property owners if they don't want to. So I don't know what to do for Mister J.J. Francis, although it sounds like the other Mister Francis to the south. Has a potential connection. You could always come through the south and over. In a future development, but without submitted plans. Or that connection. I don't think we can make this applicant do anything. That wasn't on the original preliminary plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the director? Okay, if seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Polly.
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations.
Okay, motion to approve subjects to staff stipulations made by Commissioner Polly, Commissioner Armstrong, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Discussion on motion for approval. Saying none, roll call, please.
Miller.
I.
Muller.
Bye.
Polly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Mister Chairman, that motion to approve this preliminary plat, subject to the conditions. Of the staff passes eight in favor and none opposed. And Mister Chairman, this will not go to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so this this approval is final.
Right, for the preliminary plan, that's correct.
Thank you.
Chairman, do you want me to go ahead and call? The next application, and then we'll go back and call the special use permit to see if someone is here for that.
Correct, go ahead.
Okay, our next item is under miscellaneous MPL twenty twenty-one dash zero two six. Gunnar H. Hand with planning and urban design, consideration of revisions to the Kansas City, Kansas Landmarks Ordinance.
Director Hand.
He was just gonna handle your planning urban design. As a part of our efforts with the Landmarks Commission to create a downtown historic district and historic churches multiple listing nomination formation. The Landmarks Commission had asked us to update the historic district, excuse me, historic landmark and historic districts. Ordinance accordingly, they felt it was important to have that ordinance completely up to date before we undergo. Certainly one of the most, certainly one of the, let's say, largest, most complex. And it's been a long time since we've had a new historic district in the unified government. They wanted to get all their. Ducks in a row, if you will. And so they asked us to pull what they had proposed, the changes would be out of the more. The entire zoning code update and do it as a singular action. So Steph took it, took that opportunity to review the draft, we which we submitted to you all. To remove, review the ordinance, which we drafted, which we submitted to all last week. And happy to take any questions on, but it basically boils down to three things. One, we reduced the environs buffer, which is the buffer. Around a landmark parcel or a landmark district. From five hundred feet to three hundred feet. If you're in the environs, you have to go through a staff administrative review of your project. So we reduced that from five hundred to two hundred. Which puts less of a burden on certainly staff time, but also the applicant. Or app or the community moving forward. We also aligning with that two hundred feet added all of the notification requirements we have for all of our other entitlements. Changes on master plan amendments, S U Ps and so forth. We match those notifications to all certificates of appropriateness. So if approved, moving forward, all certificates of appropriateness will have to go through. Will have to be notified. As per our existing standards, so adjacent property owners and newspaper basically becomes more official. That currently does not exist in the code. C of A is just kind of happened one off and. If you're in the neighborhood and you knew it was happening, you might show up. So there is no current notification to adjacent property owners. We thought that was a huge change. And then third is more of a general clarification transparency issue where. At one point, for instance, the environs section was added to the existing landmarks. Historic preservation ordinance, and it sort of came at the end. And it had its own set of definitions, its own set of procedures, and it just kind of fell out of out of place. So we synchronized that back into the larger ordinance. We did a little bit of moving things around and formatting so that it was more clear in terms of what the procedures are for a C of A, what the procedures are for an environs. What are and are not considered in kind changes. The the ordinance allows interpretation. So that in kind materials don't have to go through either an environs review. Or a C of A, they can just, they can get an exemption letter and just kind of move through. And there's a, there's a lot of ambiguity there, so we think we added a bunch of clarity to that issue and hopefully transparency move forward. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, but staff recommends approval of the entire ordinance update.
Questions for Director Hand. Commissioner Jones.
Gunner, this would rectify, I recall a case. Where there were people that were concerned and felt like they had an interest, as I recall, in relationship to a cemetery. And so with how this would be publicized. They would have an opportunity, whether you live within proximity or not, be made aware of. Something of historical interest to them. Is that right?
It depends on whether that cemetery was a locally designated landmark. So not necessarily, if it's not designated. So the the, there are multiple layers. To historic preservation, there's our local ordinance, which this update only speaks to what our local ordinance does. It does not speak to any state or federal designation of historic. Properties. So for us, yes, if that. If that cemetery were to become a historic district, we do have a historic district cemetery. Here on cemetery is a technically historic district. It's the only cemetery. It's the only cemetery, I believe, that is on our local. Landmarks list. But in the future, if those were to become local landmarks, then then yes, and any changes were proposed in them. Certificate appropriateness or otherwise. Well, specifically a certificate of appropriateness, then yes, it would have a two hundred foot buffer notice. It would be in the newspaper. We would send it out to all. Neighborhood groups, identified neighborhood groups. So the same thing we do for all the other. All of our other cases, we're just basically bringing C of A into that fold.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, C of A is certificate of appropriateness. I apologize for the acronyms.
So Gunner, I have a question. So on the historic environs review, you're, it's being, it's being made less restricted by changing it to two hundred foot buffer. But the the. Review itself, when we get into materials, design. This is always a tough one for me. For one, a lot of people don't even know that they belong in, they they that they are living in one now. So. When it comes time to disclose that, somebody doesn't know they bought a house, they're going to go in and remodel it, only to find out they're in a historic Byron's review. But secondly. Many times, and depending on where the property is located, they're going to be in our older parts of the city. Does it restrict people from making improvements to their property because they're not able to. Do them in such a way that it satisfies the historic appropriateness of the. The property they might be within. Two hundred or five hundred feet of.
It's gonna handle your plan and urban design. It's a, it's admittedly a bit of a can of worms here. So by reducing from five to two hundred, obviously, we cut three hundred feet of reviews out of it. Environs are interesting. We still feel like they're important to maintain.
Sure.
Other municipalities have removed them completely. People who had environs no longer have environs reviews, mainly because they thought it was complicated. Now, it is tricky. When you have an environs around a landmark, like a school is a landmark. Or a church is a landmark, and it's a single family neighborhood around it. You know, that Italian at design school has no relation in terms of materiality or design or architecture to the shotgun homes around, right?
But let's, let's go to Quandara or Parkwood, the Parkwood neighborhoods, where there are some older. Homes that have those historic significances, but then those shotgun ranches that are somewhat close by. Somebody wants to replace their windows with an affordable product. You know. Does it?
So, yeah, so to your point, the scenario I gave is very different, we think, than an environs for historic district. Because the historic district is often a grouping of buildings that have some sort of either. Shared history, shared architecture, shared experience, what have you. So those districts have the tendency to grow. And sort of, and get bigger. And so it's important for those environs views to in fact meet, we think, the standards or the character of the adjacent. District in this, in the Parkwood Historic District example. Yes, those buildings in terms of, you know, the main two or three streets of Parkwood are larger stately mansions, if you will. And some of that does fall off pretty quickly, but again. We are not trying to take those shotgun homes and say that you have to, you know, build a stone. Build a stone facade or anything of that nature. We're simply trying to maintain their existing historic character. What often happens is people rip all that stuff off. And put it back and 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 get rid of it. Well, we're trying to say we should preserve that because in the future, these historic homes. The environs of this historic district has a character in and of itself, even though those buildings and those environs might not be historic landmarks. One, they could be someday. And two, that character is in, is a part of the. The environs character is a part of the historic character of that district by its proximity and nature, right? So I think that we, we do in this landmark. In this update specifically talk about what can and cannot happen in environs, and there is more give in an environs. Than there is in a district or landmark. So for instance, we're going to go ahead and allow vinyl window replacements and environs. We cannot do that in the historic district.
Sure, okay. And and I'm not maybe speaking directly on some of the more stately properties, but I'm talking about some of the. Maybe the ones that that are around it that are within that area that could perfectly be, you know. That that would be a perfectly appropriate use without taking away from the character. And that's what I, what I don't want to do is be able to hamstring the people that are trying to upgrade their homes, you know. In in such a manner that they're not going to be able to if they have to go with a certain type of.
Yeah, very, very often we'll see, somebody wants to replace a roof, somebody wants to replace a window, somebody wants to replace a door, somebody wants to replace the siding.
And what's the mechanism for triggering that? So if, you know, neighbor A goes down to to get a permit. Because Window World is going to come in and change out the windows in their property. Is building inspections going to flag that property as the historic, historic environs and stop it?
So most of our, most of our landmarks cases come from the building inspections department because somebody walked in to get a building permit and they go up. You're in environs, you need an environs review, or you're in a, you're in a district, you need a certificate of appropriateness to move forward. The other thing that we clarify is there are certain things that do not require a building permit that do require an environs review. And so that was part of our clarification. All the stuff that we've been doing for the last decade plus. Either based on protocol, procedure. Maybe even wrote, we codified in this update.
Okay. I just.
And and again, I didn't mention, I want to come back to your question originally, I never answered it specifically, but. There is a section in the code where all historically designated properties are supposed to have an H suffix attached to them. We're working with our geospatial services department in the unified government right now to finally do that. So we do believe there are things in the code that we have never done. That we are now actively working on, that we hope will. Expand the awareness of the public that they are in or adjacent to a stored structure, and that's one of them. That's not the end all be all, but that's certainly a good start. The one that's in the code.
Okay, I mean, I I want to preserve those homes, but I want to preserve the neighbors' ability to improve their homes without being, you know. Tied to other, I mean, it's difficult when your home is tied to another home because of where it's located and and. It's just, it's just kind of a slippery slope to preserve one and allow someone else to do something to their home, which maybe isn't as historically significant. As the other one that's three houses down from it. And when you're in some of our older neighborhoods, those lots are so small that two hundred feet. Could, you know, in some cases, that's eight lots in certain parts of the city where we, you know, these twenty foot lots, so, okay. Any other?
We felt comfortable with two hundred just for that very reason that you just mentioned. It basically gets you the street, the the. The street front cross from the district and the one behind it. That's basically what we get.
Okay. Any further questions for the director on this, on this issue? Do you need a motion from us to?
Need a recommendation one way to be considered by the Board of Commissioners.
All right, thank you. Any questions? If not, I will stand for a motion for a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Just as a formality, could you please ask if there's anyone in favor? Just as a formality, could you please ask if there's anyone in favor or in opposition to this ordinance?
Is there anyone in the audience in favor of or in opposition of this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, going back to seeing, I thank you Janet, seeing none, we'll go back to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Polly.
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, both. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Jones. Miller.
I.
Moller.
I.
Polly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval. Of the amendments to the Kansas City, Kansas landmarks ordinance passes eight in favor and opposed.
Thank you. So this will be heard at the December second meeting, is that correct Janet?
That is correct, sir.
At seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go back and recall this specially used permit, but I also want to. Remind the commission that we do have a couple of reports that are going to be given by staff after I call this application.
Okay.
Special use permit application SP twenty twenty one dash zero four six. Mayor Hernandez, special use permit for two horses on residential property at thirteen fifteen North eighty sixth Street.
Mr. and Mrs. Hernandez, I don't see you on our list of speakers as anyone representing the Hernandez family on this case. Seeing none, Gunner, can you give us an update? Is this something we can move forward on? Were, were the Hernandezes told that they needed to be here tonight?
Just going to handle your planning design. We did let them know they needed to be here tonight. We have worked with them extensively. I believe this case was originally filed. Few months ago, so we have been waiting for some stuff from them, but I, I can present if you prefer.
Have they been, have they been working with your office? And that's, so it's, we're moving forward, this isn't a case where they're not complying.
That's correct.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Okay, so this special use permit is for the keeping of two horses on this property. It is under five, it is currently zoned R one, but it is under five acres. So it requires a special use permit. This is in the midtown area. Excuse me, just north of State Avenue. You can see it's one of those long, deep lots. Typical of this area, some site photos that you can see here, they are currently doing it. Right now, and this is some of those pictures thereof. What we would say is Steph had a couple of conditions. We did get a conservation plan that confirmed. Stabbling two horses would be okay. There are a list of conditions included. In our staff report that are directly from the conservation district accordingly. Additionally, there are two, I think it's two, might be one, there is an open, no, there's two, there is an o, two open notice of violations. Related to some. Debris on the property, and so part of our conditions are to rectify and clear those two notices of violations before this SUP can be heard. Accordingly, we received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Again, I mentioned the two NOBs. But staff does recommend approval for two years.
Okay, questions for Director Hand on this case? Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight speaking in favor of or in opposition of this case? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we've already heard from Director Hand, so I will stand for a motion if. You're so inclined. Boy, we're so close to finishing this meeting. Hate to get hung up on this one. Anyone? Yes, there we go. Commissioner Miller.
Moved to approve subject to stipulations in the staff report.
Thank you. Motion approved by Commissioner Miller. Do we have a second? Commissioner Armstrong.
Yes.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, is there a, any discussion on the motion for approval? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
I.
Moller.
I.
Polly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
I.
Conley.
I.
Ernst.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on December second at seven PM. I have in my notes. They're badly written, that Gunner is to provide some kind of update, and I cannot read what that word was that I wrote, Gunner.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Janet.
Well, he's, the first item is going to be ordinance reports. He's going to make an update on. Ordinance that staff is working on.
Ordinance was the word. I just did not write it clear enough that I understood what I wrote, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is going to handle your planner design. Quick, just a quick update. We, we heard the historic preservation ordinance tonight. We have a couple lined up. In the next couple of months, we did receive approval from the CAO to hire and effectively create an ordinance studies. Section, so we hope in twenty twenty two, to more regularly see many more ordinance updates. I had mentioned previously that we're currently updating the countywide mobility plan. Now. We are going to come back next year in twenty twenty two to update our citywide master plan. At that time, when we have a much clearer vision for the, the unified government moving forward. Is the right time to wholesale update the zoning ordinance. Until that time, we know that there's a lot of need and a lot of issues, parking being one of them. We've heard a lot of pressure to do something about more policies around infill housing. As well as urban farming. So with that new ordinance study section, not only will we be gearing back up. For a complete overhaul of the zoning code, but we will be intentional in the next year to be more strategic. And move policies forward. I just wanted to let you know that we were going to be, you're going to be seeing quite a few more ordinances in the next year. Specifically in December, you're going to see two more. One is going to be an, an extension of the existing murals and residential districts. Moratorium. We just haven't gotten to that, and it's sunset, it's at the end of this calendar year, so we're going to ask for a six month extension again. So we can hire this person and get them going on it. And then the second one is all of our COVID nineteen emergency ordinances, which we had extended through twenty twenty one. Also sunset at the end of this calendar year, and we are going to ask that those be made permanent. And so that is what you'll hear in December. We have an update to the overlay district, which we have created in partnership with the cities of Westwood and Roland Park. Along Forty Seventh Street, it's the Forty Seventh Street overlay. That has, we've been working with those two municipalities on wholesale chain. Not wholesale, but on updating that policy, effectively removing the review board and allowing the ordinance to just be reviewed individually. By each individual city, taking some red tape out of that, out of that works. So things like that are in the works now, you'll see in the next couple of months. And then we hope to again, do some more work on our ordinance maintenance in the next year. And so I just want to give you guys a quick update, you'll see more of those.
Okay, any questions?
Anything that we're not providing you, or you want to see, I mean, again, essentially, I'm sending you guys the drafts as, and that's it. So if there's anything specific that you would like to see. When we submit those ordinance changes, please let me know. Otherwise, if you want to provide additional input or. Throw some stuff out, we'd be happy to have a conversation about other ordinances you think are a high priority, just let me know. We're talking right now.
Questions for, sure, questions for Director Hand on any, any, what he said? Okay, Gunner, can you provide the number to the planning office and the email for those still in the audience? Cause I think there might still be some outstanding questions from the two Mr. Francis's that were on the Connor Creek case, that may need to reach your office.
Yeah, and I believe they've been in contact, those, the Francis's have been in contact with Michael Farley, who's the lead planner on the Connor Creek South Estates Project, so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
But for the record, the main line is nine one three five seven three five seven five zero. You can also reach out to planning info, planning I N F O. At Y K C K dot org with any of your common questions.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because.
There's always a planner to answer your call.
Okay, after we closed the public portion meeting, I saw some hands go up, and so, want to make sure that was available. Anything else, Patrick, anything from you? Anyone else? Do we have anything else, Gunner, we need to bring up?
Not on that item. Ms. Janet, was there another one?
I know, you talked about it when you were doing this, so you're finished.
Done.
Commissioner Jones, you started strong, you finished a little slower, were you just pooped?
Something like that.
Okay, Commissioner Ernst, you good? Okay. Well, this was not a lively crowd tonight. I was just, just checking on all of y'all. When I heard your, your, your yays and nays are yay. Nay, and so, just, just checking. We're all good? All right, well, no other. Nothing else to come before the body, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
Everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.